Our meeting is your order. We've got a little technical difficulties, but we are recording. We'll get it going live here in just a little bit. Dr. Wood, thank you everybody for coming out on our November ninth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. Ask no one to please stand for our application. Dr. Wood, good presentation.
Oh, great to have the Father, who once again brought us together as someone together, Lord. Father, we thank you first and foremost for this day. We thank you all for the life that has been given. And Father, we are around this table, Lord, and we're citizens involved. We ask you to keep our hands in your hands, Lord, and we will come and walk the light. Put our vision together, Lord, so we can make this kind of better place. Father God, these are all best in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Our next approval agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to set the agenda of the meeting.
Second. All favorities right hand. Next, a public hearing. Call us a public hearing. Orders reported as eight twenty-two. Orders authorized pursuant of Title twelve, Chapter forty-four. The code of laws of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six has amended the execution and delivery of infrastructure credit agreement between Marburg County, South Carolina, and the Kelpin Heights County Project Feather, which includes a brand of certain special source of revenue credits. The members exist in P and L of Adler Tax Agreement between the county and Project Feather to provide for an extension of the investment period therein. An amendment to another decision to be in lieu of Adler Tax Agreement between the county and Project Feather to provide for an extension of the term of this agreement and other matters related thereto. So I guess we'll just go ahead and do it, woman, just.
Hold on. We scheduled it for December fourteenth. We're waiting on the detail from the company's office, so we just need.
Just stand with me.
She'll have real re-advertising for December fourteenth.
Okay, all right. You want to have that for the hearing for December? Our next approval of minutes, October twenty-one, regular council meeting.
A move when accepted, minutes are written.
Second. Second, all favorities right hand. Orders eight twenty-one, flood prevention orders, third reading.
This is the third final reading of this ordinance, which puts things in place and allows folks to get flood insurance and dictates the different types of things that go on the end of flood. This is something that's renewed every three or four years, and actually, more than that, the staff's recommending that you approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve the orders eight twenty-one.
Second. Motion second, all favorities right hand. Orders eight twenty-three. Orders instituted. Orders authorized to include the waterable properties located in Marburg County, which have watered kind of business in the industrial park. Plan for the alternative allocation of revenues derived from the P and L of tax payments made with respect to such properties placed in the park and other matters related thereto. Motion.
Mr. Chairman, this and the next quarter, that's an economic development project that we have ongoing, doing the industrial park. This will allow us to put that in a what's called multi-county industrial park. This is the second reading, the third reading on this, and the second one we'll have more details before then. But we ask you to keep moving along and approve the second reading.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion second, orders eight twenty-three, all favorities right hand. Orders eight twenty-four. Orders authorized to sell the lease property on Marburg County, purpose, you know, development. Things that are just tying in with the same thing we have.
Yes, sir. We're in the process of, we own, the county owns land in the industrial park. They don't own a certain piece, so we're making arrangements to get that. And then, once we have it, then the council would have to consider providing this to this project. So, again, the second reading, we were able to get the surveys and all the data. We'll be working on it at Turner McCloud, work up all the paperwork and have that for the third reading.
Motion to approve, orders eight twenty-four. Motion number second, all favorities right hand, second reading. New business. We've known, so that's good. Porters of Lords and Commissions. Porters of Lords and Commissions. We have none of reports, finance report, which is West Park.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. Mr. Monday, we had the report before you for the four months ending October thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. The general fund revenues total one million six ninety-three, six sixteen. The expenditures through that same date total three million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars of a twelve million eight hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-four dollar budget, or thirty point four one percent of budget to date. Any questions that you're going to answer this?
Still on track for previous years.
We are. We're following.
More questions, the court?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as we do every month, we recognize employees with a more than five-year service to the county. This month of October, we had a few. Mary Collins with eight years. Lori Davis Moses with seventeen years. Christina Thompson with fifteen years. Christina Crawson with five years. Cynthia Olson with five years. And Courtney Skipper with five years. You see those folks around. We congratulate them and thank them for their service. We have several events coming up. We have the employee Christmas dinner that we have for our employees on the Thursday, December ninth. We, you can see the detail on that. It'll be five-thirty in Plumb and the Prince Recreation Center. We have the economic development drop-in on the fifteenth, where we have a drop-in for industries and all of the town. You all, people invited to come as well. That's on the fifteenth. Couple of parades coming about. First of all, down in McCall, advise they're not having a Christmas parade. McCall is having one on the fourth, Saturday the fourth. And City Benesville's having there on Saturday the eleventh. We've had floats or cars or different things in the parade before, so we need to kind of work that out, where we would get a float in the past that has changed and all. So, you know, if y'all are interested in doing that, we'll meet with Miss Monday and figure something out with that. Okay, as far as the event trade report, we'll thank you, everybody, for attending the strategic plan session last Thursday. I think we had a full day and a lot of different things discussed and trying to go forward with that and develop that even further. So we appreciate your attendance and participation and staff's participation, and they were there as well. Amazing progress, and we still have a lot of things to work on. So that was a good day, from my perspective. We did receive proposals. One thing that's come out of that and one thing to talk about is additional sign to be able to help try to communicate with our citizens, things that are going on, because, as you know, we talked in there how hard it is to get word out to people. And we then received the proposals. We put it out for bids, more or less, and received those back Friday. Received five proposals. The staff is looking at them and bringing them, you all, at a call meeting on the twenty-second. There'll be a need for a call meeting for redistricting. So we'll have that ready to roll and we'll go with that. With regard to redistricting, we have received, finally, we received the preliminary numbers about redistricting, and I've sent that to you all with the numbers on it. And there are at least some districts that need to gain some and some that need to lose some. So that's going to mean, you know, a process of figuring out where things move around without disturbing communities or changing demographics and all that. So the first step is to have a state represented from a state agency that does it, that helps with this, to come talk to you all about it in a public meeting, people can come listen, and try to get an understanding of how that works, so you all can work on that. Because it's going to be, you know, we need to move this, can we move that? It's like a puzzle, and it hasn't been done in ten years, because it's only done every ten years. So, Mr. Chairman, we're proposing a lunch meeting on the twenty-second. That's the only date we can get the state people here in person, and I felt like you all would like to come and be here in person, and even talk and ask questions and that sort of thing. Last thing I want to touch on more, I know that the tax notices have gone out and people are starting to get them and heard some comments and stuff about that. Last year was a state mandated year for doing a revaluation of property, for looking at the tax value of property in the county. And in those years that you do that, the law was very clear that the people levying taxes, the county, schools, whoever, had to go and look, and if you had everybody's property up and it went up in value, you had to adjust taxes so it doesn't create a tax increase. And you all, County, Marburg County Council, was very diligent in doing it, did it out in the open, in the budget process, and as a result, reduced county ordinary taxes by thirty bills. Y'all were reducing taxes. So if you look at just the county part of your tax bill, for most people, there's always exceptions. Those, that, that part of it should have gone down, actually, or stayed the same. And I looked at ones I have and some folks that I know have looked at theirs and they saw that. County Council, as you all know, has no control over the other taxing entities here. They have no control over the city for town, or the school district, or anybody else. All you can control is what you all vote on. And you all voted to reduce taxes based on that law. The other thing is, after you made that adjustment and kind of got it back adjusted, you could have chosen to go up on taxes a certain amount. The state each year says inflation was one point two eight percent last year. I think that's actually the number, if I remember it right. So County Council could have said, well, we're going to go up taxes on that, that amount. But you also chose not to do that. In fact, you have not increased county ordinary taxes in three years. So I just think that needs to be on the record, as people, people are going to fuss about the tax bill every year, but this year with some changes. If there is someone other than you, than the County Council, that didn't make those adjustments, it created a pretty significant increase, but not with the county portion of it. That's my report. Pretty brief, I thought, to talk a lot of teaching meeting, and this is what I had for my.
Mr. Monday, on the lunch, our proposed lunch on the twenty-second, have you had a location yet? No location, have you been established yet?
Yeah. Yeah, some suggestion. Because we really haven't even, we've just got to do. You know, it's a public meeting, because you have a forum there, and I know there are people I know, you know, like Ms. Lawson and all, people have interest in that, so we want to be able for folks to come and see it. So we'll work on that.
Mr. Black, did you have something? Did you have something? I thought I heard you were fixing that.
He had a date on there about December the twenty-sixth, or November twenty-sixth. What date that was?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay.
We'll send you something out. This is just kind of half of the day. We'll make sure, Ms. Monday will be working on that. We'll make sure to talk with you all to get that arranged. That's very important. That's ten years important. I want to come to that in ten years.
Go to work.
Yeah, you know, if that, you know, the property attachment is, they're looking at how, we only get about thirty, thirty seven hundred dollars is what it was called when it breaks out. So we did go down, you know, it's, it's just, you know, whatever you look at, make sure we're looking at the right things for the right people, you know. We did our part, did our due diligence to not raise, Mr. Black has been a firm advocate of that, you know, and Mr. Business, I know everybody's trying, you know, to be considerate. So we did, and we did not raise taxes on our part. So I think that's, we did. Anything else? All right. Next, recognition of citizen's requests before council. We have quite a few, and so I'd ask that you come up, remind everybody, have three minutes. We have a few here. I think there's about six or seven that's requesting to speak. So I think first, Ms. Tabata Kane, is that correct? Ms. Tabata, come up, state your name, where you're at, and what you're speaking about.
Please say your name, sirs. I have been here for some time in Marburg County, and I've watched Marburg County develop into a beautiful place, and y'all helped me, but my daughter autism, that's why I'm before you tonight. A lot of children in the country don't have literature to help them with their parents as they develop. I've watched my child grow from four years old when she was diagnosed, and I was in Marburg County sheltering her and took her in like a, like a little puppy, if you will, and trained her with the autism program. I didn't know what it was, I was like, oh my God. But it's getting huge. I mean, it's really impacting the United States real hard now in Japan. And so we brought up a book, and it's been out there for some time. And so while I'm standing before you all, is I'm asking the council and the community to dig in the pocketbooks and help me get that project done. I know when I go to Amazon and I look, I say, Dad, my community is not with me, so I got to do something. And me and Jasmine was talking, and we said, let's give them books, and then they, you know, make their judgment on how they want to purchase and how many they want to purchase, and get some at the school, too, because that's where she got her help at, was at Marburg County School this weekend. I was so happy that they came in and helped, so I bought some little prototypes. These are not the finished products. I couldn't afford to get all of you guys a nice little, you know, finished product. So I do have prototypes here that I'm going to give out, you know, for you all. It's love from our heart, and as a company, a small company here in Marburg County, we want to give back. And our goal is to ultimately give back to the families this holiday season with the council help, you know, a whole book for each family to let them know that Marburg County do care, do care. And it's been a citizen in this small town. I call it Mayberry sometime, I rather. But it is like Aunt Hopey, Hopey and Andy, and Rip. So I just thank y'all for all of you all, and I thank y'all for coming out. Let's allow me the time to come and speak and thank everybody for helping me with Jasmine. We have chocolate to go with, too. Chocolate turtles. And I think this is something that is a good initiative for the children, for like, I went to the school board, and those guys said they couldn't do the candy because they watching the kids wait. So I said, well, maybe you get it at Walmart and let the kids get the candy from there, and the parents decide, hey, you get it up the turp out of there. And what touched my heart, I went to the daughter room with my daughter, and these little kids, I mean, they, they seem to look, this one is smashed up right now, but they seem those turtles. I kid you not. The kids went crazy, the dad said, I have to come back now. Man, I have to come back, because the children seen the turp out, they want, they want one of them. So all the turp outs went like that. So if we can just get that incentive, we look at turp pops in Walmart, and that way, that, that money from that, you take and purchase books for the poor people of Marburg County, the poorest people, and educate them at the same time. You know, only not with an autism. I can't, I'm just a mother, and business of a small business on my business, business on here in Marburg County, that want to make a, you know, a powerful impact for autism discussion. Thank y'all so much. Do y'all want your books now? Show them. Yes, sir.
Next, Mr. J.K. George.
All together.
All together. Oh, okay, 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 all right, all right. And is that where you came?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, did you, were you going to speak, or you should go? Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Next, Donald Andrews.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the invitation to come to be a part. My name is Donald Andrews, and I have been selected and honored to serve as the interim superintendent of the Marburg County Schools. And I want to begin by saying thank you for the invitation, thank you to the Board of Education for giving me that honor. And I wanted to share with you that a lot of times people will ask, what, what is an interim? And I always tell folks, and then through the process, I say, you know, the interim comes in to move us from the previous administration, in this case, Dr. Brad McCord, to a new administration at the end of the school year. And with that, many times people will assume, and you shouldn't assume, but they will assume that, or you're just going to hold the fort down until someone else can come in. That's the farthest thing from the truth. I can't say what others will do, but as an interim superintendent, I want to commit to you, our county council, and the citizens of this great county, that I'm here to work, and that we're here to continue to move the school district forward, and to do all that we can to collaborate, and myself collaborate with our city, our small towns around, our cities, as well as our county council. So don't ever hesitate to call me to come before you share information. I'm more than happy to do so. But I'm indeed honored and served, as I said, to serve with you, and don't hesitate to call on me with your thoughts and your ideas, because this is a great county in a great location, and we have a lot of promise. We've got a lot of challenges in our school system, as all school systems do, but I can assure you of my commitment and our commitment, our Board of Education's commitment, to meet the needs, to educate all of our children, college, career, and military ready. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. You're welcome. Next, Mr. Pearl Lawson.
Good afternoon, here and ladies of the council. It is indeed an honor to be here and also to say hello to you, Superintendent Andrews. Thank you so much. I'm here on behalf of the Marburg County branch and nobody's feet, and any other citizen, concerned citizen. I thought to report that Monday, the game about to redistricting plan, want to again to stress that it's an indeed character that the Marburg County branch also be a part of that plan, and any others group, because after working with the census, I know what that gap looks like, and I'm blessed to work with a group from Columbia, his name is Dr. John Root. He's with the Root Group in Columbia. Also have access to digital access to those labs, and I've seen some of those changes that's needed for the lab. Have access to the state plan and house plans, want to share that with you in public meetings and share with the community. So because Marburg County branch will be sharing that information. I realize you have a challenging goal before you. Right now, we have twenty-three, twenty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-eight citizens who are twelve and older in Marburg County, and that's based on the vaccination rate, and that's how we get our numbers. Adding those children five and under will be a big plus for our growth. That's why I know that some areas, and I, you can see that with those new development, with those apartments on Shawall Street, those new developments there, changing those districts. But our most concern, those broken districts, like in the Clive area, too much of Clive is broken up. Too many streets in the county have one side of the street A, one side of the street B, those kinds of things. I hope when we all look at that, we consider that, yet keep within that deviation of number equally for each county. So I have very much to wear, what needs to take place, and I very much be a part of those meetings, bring some ideas to you, also, we all look at it together so the lines can be drawn there. And I do thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you for the opportunity and the work that you all do to try to make sure that everything is done fairly in all the county. And also to say that these little lines are also a favorite, the school board lines. So members who run the school board, they really need to be interested in those lines. So I would encourage anybody, not just people who run, not because of you all that come in, but any person in Marburg County. If you're interested in this county, you need to try to channel me and make contact with y'all. I do appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Next, Ms. Patricia Quick.
This is Patricia Quick, chairman of the board. My name is Patricia Quick, I'm from Tatum, South Carolina, and I too, I am a political acting chairperson for the NAACP. And I had the privilege of meeting a lot of residents in Tatum, South Carolina during the election period. And with the redistricting going on, a lot of the complaints are that they can't vote in Tatum, but they live in Tatum. And they can't vote because they have Bennett Steel zip code or McCall zip code. And that's been an issue, and I wanted to come on their behalf tonight and speak on behalf of the town of Tatum. I live in Tatum, been there since two thousand and six. I'm from Bennett Field, South Carolina, so I know a lot about what goes on in and out sometimes, because I'm out there, but you don't know about me. But I'm out there. But, but as working in the community, I learned a lot, and I just wanted to come and stand with the head of the citizens and the residents of Tatum, South Carolina, that our population is a little over five hundred, and the line stretched from Avenue Road all the way down to Beute Spott Road. But the only thing that they're counting is thirty houses inside the city limit. Thirty people, only thirty-two people can vote in the election, and that's why I'm here tonight, you know, to bring it to your attention. Don't know if you're aware of it or not, but we're here to stand on the concerns of the citizens and about, even without mailing, we have a problem even with getting bills paid because the zip codes are so messed up. If you go down in front of the post office, right down in front of the graveyard, going out to McCall, the city limit is right there, those people cannot vote in the town of Tatum, but they live in Tatum. And they can't vote because they got McCall zip code. Then if you come on the other side of the Don'tar plant, those people can't vote from Don'tar down because they got Bennett Field zip code, but they all live inside of Tatum. So that's why I'm here tonight, to bring it to your attention. And if you need my number, I would love to work with you if you find out more about it, learn more about it, so I can be a positive force, a positive help in the town of Tatum. Tatum is small, but it's somebody that they care. I care about the town, and I care about the citizens there. And I'm their spokesperson. I'm Tatum ambassador. So that note I would sit down after that. But anyway, I'm open to share my number and being a part of what's going on with redistricting and getting involved, to making the whole Marburg County a part, you know, make it good, and that Tatum does not get overlooked or bypassed, because there's more people in Tatum than we realize, than we realize. Because you're only going to focus on the small city limit and not those in the county. Everybody count. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking on behalf of the general things that is important, and so I say thank you that you took time out to not come speak, you know. We heard it, and a lot of times, nobody will be, nobody will say anything to us, so we thank you for taking the time to come out. So before we have, I come from sheriff, I'm a regular sheriff. It usually asks segment for last, so go ahead and get able to come on up.
Good evening to all the attendees. Mr. Chairman, to the council, county administrator, to all of you, I want to say thank you all for what y'all have done, and thank y'all, which all have loved us for, what you did. And of course, you all, when we have a tragedy the other night, you know, we're still working on that, and I feel real good about where we are right now. So again, thank y'all so much.
Next, Mr. Wood, start again.
First, Dr. Andrews.
Ms. Andrews, I don't have a doctor.
It does have Ms. Andrews, but we welcome you to Marburg County, and we look, you know, we look at what you and capacity we can, as my name is, was, you know, I'm glad that you came to the meeting to introduce yourself, you know, like everybody, who is this new man here, you know? So you, a black gentleman, who we met, like we met. Sheriff, we know your hand is full. Prayer continues throughout y'all each and every day. I know that the hollies seem to be even rougher and now with this situation of people not taking life seriously. They, you know, all young people, it just snuffs each other out so quickly, so I know your hand is full. Ambassador, how you doing? Great, great. And I, if I say with you and Ms. Lawson, we definitely need y'all input, we all need y'all input for the redistricting, and I understand the pain of people not voting in Clive situation, we got the same situation, the town's part of it. One set of people that live, born in Clive, lived there, but yet they can't vote in the city election, you know, go figure, you know? So it is something that, a task that we all need to work together, and we can make everybody, we can satisfy everybody, we know that, but we need to satisfy as many people as possible. October, eh, October. I'm going to talk to you after we get out, like, a little more about your business and everything. But as, as I said, I found out about the parade in Clive, this funding, and give that to as much information I can give about the flow situation and what we could do, what we do for the parade. So I'm glad that a lot of people is getting out, but yet, although we're getting out, we still got to be COVID-aware. We can't, we know just that haven't gone away, and it's good that we moved forward some, but yet, you still got to be careful. You still got to be careful, and like Dr. Johnson had informed before, we are the lowest in the union, in the nation.
You are.
We're still young, we did the last.
You're thirty-seven percent. We were tied with Cherokee, and Cherokee has risen to thirty-seven point eight percent. We're thirty in vaccination.
I know, and that is, and it's free. That is free. That's the crazy part, if I didn't free. That is free. That is the crazy part about it, free. You know, if we were charging, they were charging for vaccine, didn't everybody cry out, why the white pants so much? But it's free and we did, you know, some of us did not take that shot. Yeah, so. I'm done. You should let go, I ain't good at shit, but I'm gonna pass it on.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say, uh, I'd like to welcome Mr. Andrews from Marlboro County. And, uh, the job that you took on there, I know it's a task, but I believe, I believe you've been handling it. I believe you, believe you've been handling it. And, uh, thank you for coming and joining. Also, Mr. Ms. Quid, Ms. Lawson, and I'm, I'm the senior book lady. Okay, I'm the book lady. Thank y'all for coming and sharing your opinion about things that's going on. It's put, you gotta mess up in Tatum anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we need some help in Tatum, cause Tatum, you know, is there and it's more than just a run through.
Yeah.
And we need some, um, last year, I did a petition and to get the speed limit dropped from forty-five to thirty-five and to see if we can get some caution lights. Because I live right there in front of Rolling Carpet. I've waken up two o'clock in the morning with cars in my driveway, in my yard, sliding across my yard, hitting poles, breaking them in half. And we need something done in Tatum. As far as trying to help. And it's sad to see with all these accidents that going on. They have no respect for the speed in that town.
Okay.
There's an advocate right there. No, so there's an advocate right there, should we, should we just wait?
I, I can believe, I, I feel like, uh, Mr. Monday, our administrator, I, I believe in my heart that he's gonna do everything he can to help you. I really do believe that. Okay? And, uh, all right. So, and Ms. Lawson, you keep on doing what you're doing and you're doing a wonderful job on the thing that you do. And you still ahead of it. You don't let it get behind you, you still ahead of it. And that's good. That's a good thing. Uh, okay, the book lady. Uh, I think that's the wonderful thing that you're doing. I'm, I'm anxious to read that book. And, uh, I will do everything in my power to support you in any way I can. Okay? You talked about, uh, I think you said your daughter's autism?
Yes.
Okay. I had spoke, well, I brought it up at the, uh, meeting about an enrichment center. Where that enrichment center would cover, uh, autism, uh, disability, all kinds of stuff. We got all kind of programs in there. And that would really work good with that. Yeah, so we'll talk about it. Okay? But, uh, you keep doing what you're doing and I, I, I will support you in any way I can. I can help you in any way, just let me know. Okay? I reach out and, uh, I, I, I got a few people that I know that is, um, sort of, uh, no, it's, uh, not really, boy, I, I was over here. You're the one rich. But, uh, but anyway, I have some people that would be interested in getting some of those books. But I would do everything I can to, uh, promote it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. And, uh, I don't think, I haven't, I think that's enough.
I, I, I don't know what to say. Sheriff, um, let me address you first. Man, I wouldn't want any other sheriff, uh, in time like these, man. I don't know what in the world is going on in our community right now. God bless you. Our superintendent, uh, interim superintendent, we looking forward to working with you in every way possible. We were, uh, uh, for lack of a better word, we were disrespected. We feel, I feel, with the last, uh, administration and hopefully we, we can get together and do some positive things with the, the county and the school system. The, uh, Ms. Lawson, um, and the ambassador there. I most certainly hope and I, I most certainly gonna do everything that I can to make sure that you, uh, advise council on these, these lines, uh, the district lines. Because of the experience that you have and the things, it's, it's so important, uh, to us this time. You know, our communities are, uh, broken up, you know? And I'm just gonna put it out there, a lot of communities, uh, that are not, uh, of color are not broken up. One side of the road is, is this district, the other side of the road is another district. We're gonna do everything in our power with you, with you and five of us to correct a lot of that hopefully this time. I wanna, um, ask the administrator, since this holiday, uh, is coming up. I'm pretty, pretty holiday today. Do you know of any, uh, is the county gonna sponsor any, uh, food giveaways for our citizens or anything?
Working on that. I can get with you after the meeting, I will say that, but working on that.
Okay.
So I think, I think that's going to work.
People, we, we do have people in our community that really need some of this stuff. Other than that, so.
Um, like echo, councilman Stroll and Ms. Lawson and Reverend Quid for everything in the redistricting process, that's something that, um, can either get blown up and can really tear our communities up. And so whatever efforts and whatever, um, assistance you can give us to be able to ensure that we are doing it in a fair, equitable manner, um, we very much appreciate. Um, Ms. Andrews, thank you for, um, coming to introduce yourself to the council. We look forward to working with, um, the school district, this district, this group. Thank you for all the work that you do behind the scenes that nobody ever sees. We thank you for the tremendous work that you do on behalf of the Marlboro County School District and our children. Uh, Ms. Kane, my district members, thank you for presenting, um, your, your book. And I'm sure that you have some, um, members of council who will be more than happy to engage with you as you're doing the worthy effort and getting the word about autism that has really, really had wrapped up in the last couple of years, um, on council. So I understand, you know, what you have gone through and the, the effort that you have, um, put in with your daughter and so many other men and advocates. So we thank you for, um, your effort. I'm a little concerned a little bit, you know, I looked at our agenda and didn't see any new business. You know, I understand that's always what is happening. Um, I'm looking, encourage, discourage. We had a great strategic planning meeting on last Thursday. Um, but I'm looking to get to work and, and I'm looking for action plans. And I'm looking for, um, budget management. And I'm looking for things that we can really and truly sink our teeth in and start moving our county forward. I've been to so many great meetings that ended at a great meeting and nothing has transpired out of that. I'm, I'm very interested in partnering with our school district, our, our city, um, around the, the county. So if we can really and truly stop playing, um, like we're doing something and really, really do something. You know, this is, this is, you know, something, this county is a, a, a love mine. You know, I grew up here, uh, I've experienced so many things here. And we need for our kids to experience more. We can't do it all, but we can do better than what we do. We need strategic action. You don't need to talk about it. You don't need to plan about it. We need to be able to get our boots to the ground and begin to do something tenderly instead of meeting and having a great meeting and having a great conversation about what we can do and not doing what we can't. This time out for that, it's been going in that rap race for at least twenty-five years. Twenty-five years, I can say, that we been in the same loop and it's time to remove that loop. And us as a council, take the lead and move our county forward. If we have to take the lead, I'm willing. I have the time. I have the expertise. I have the knowledge to connect with other council members. And let's stop just coming on a second Tuesday in the month and leaving and then coming back the next Tuesday in the month without any action buying, without any action plans to move our county forward. People are hurting and they need our county officials and our county government leaders to step up and take charge and show that we care about moving our county forward. We know we can't do everything, but there is more that we can do. There's more that we can. I've been through strategic planning meetings from the state level, from the private sector, from the public sector. We have to have action items and things that council members can sink their teeth in so we can begin to move forward. We really need, that's my spirit was.
Okay. Um, Mr. Andrews, it's certainly good to meet you and look forward to being here to help you and in your endeavor. Um, Ms. Kane, I look forward to reading the book and, uh, good luck in your endeavors as well. And Ms. Ms. Lawson and Reverend Quid, uh, I appreciate y'all's concern for the redistricting and, uh, I think we'll make some good headlines on that November twenty-second, eighth. Um, staff, Ron, doing a great job with the strategic planning. And I'd like to say that, uh, Dr. Johnson, you're new to council, but, uh, that I struck strategic planning, we, we stepped to it and we got a lot to, and we are moving forward. And we are accomplishing things from nine oh one to EMS and many other things. We can, uh, sit here online talking about our accomplishments. But there's a lot more to do and we're working together, city and any other entity. And, uh, and look forward to making progress.
I think I'll leave the speaking and the council certainly look into everything that everybody's talking about. Um, uh, we've got, uh, a good group here, good members and everybody loves to camp. And, uh, I think we have the best interest of the county and the heart, all of us, you know? And, uh, no matter who the district it is, we looking at the whole county. That's what we try to do here. And, uh, you're right, these lines need to be adjusted right and, and get it on fair terms with everybody. And, uh, I just, uh, appreciate how y'all came and, and talked about everything. It was, uh, lots of times it's not in order like that. People, uh, don't be calm and talk about what they, you don't get nothing done if you, you know, you don't just be calm and, and what you really mean, you know? And I appreciate that. And, um, I, I just thank y'all for, for being interested in the county. I hope that, uh, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving. Just remember, if you go leave home or something, maybe get your neighbor to kind of watch a house or something. These times during these holidays, break-ins and stuff is so bad. Just kind of be aware of that because Sheriff's got his hands full, completely out of nowhere. And, uh, you know, it's just people, this time of year, they'll take advantage of things on your porch for them there, presents or something. Be careful, you know? And I just want to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving. And we got a lot to be thankful for. And we need to, you know, we need to think about that. Um, and, uh, for the school district, we, we thank you and, uh, you got your hands full for sure. I believe that, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna make a difference. That's, that's what we want. And the main thing is for the kids. It ain't for feeding politics out of it, leaving everything out of it. And let's get the, uh, education there for the kids. And I thank y'all and happy Thanksgiving.
You kind of just echoed, remember you go last, everybody's leaving a mention five, six or eight times. You know, we thank everybody for what everybody's done. Uh, you know, we can call everybody's name again. But you know, as we sit up here and think and talk and the hurdles we have before us, the things that we succeed with, you know, there's nowhere else I want, want to live. I call Marlboro County home. I'm gonna always call it home. And the decisions that we make, uh, is I'm gonna always try to make the best decision for, for everybody. You know, if you have to go up on a tax, it, it affects everybody up here. We go down on taxes, it affects everybody up here. So there's nowhere else I, that I know of that I want to live. This is, this is home. This is probably home my entire life. So, uh, you know, and I think probably for a lot of us up here, this is gonna be home. You know, we grew up here. Here we had some that come in, but, uh, we, this, this is home for, for us. And we're gonna give it, give it our all and continue to move forward and strive to make it as best as we can within our power. So, uh, with heaven and good Lord, and you know, uh, is we, 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 we can do it. So we thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, we, you have a great, uh, Thanksgiving. And, uh, we look forward to every, everything that everybody does. And like I said, remember, like I said, and, uh, we're blessed people. We are blessed. And so let's, let's make sure we thank the wonderful lessons. We call this meeting a journey.